All right, then I will adjourn. And I will start another meeting right away. Welcome here. We'll now move to the regular council agenda for Tuesday, March 20th. Call the meeting's order. Mr. Fair, can I ask you to bring the opening, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had prepared two pages here, but seeing we're already a little bit late here, I think I'm going to cut it down to about half of this. All right. I decided that I'm going to speak a little bit about homelessness in our community. And I saw it firsthand this morning. So I'm not an authoritarian, but it was a bit of an eye-opener for me. So this morning, I came to work early. And when my staff started coming in, one of my employees came in and asked, "Who's the guy that's sleeping on the stone hill that parked behind the shop with a wheelchair beside it?" And he was slouched over an open fuel tank. So I went out there and helped him back into his wheelchair. And I invited him in for coffee and toast. And I noticed that both of his legs had been amputated. So I asked him how he had got there. And he said he had left his apartment on Lowen Boulevard, and he had made his way up there. And he was obviously in search for something that's going to take his pain away temporarily. And so it had taken him two and a half hours to ride up there. And so I asked him how his legs had been amputated. And as he started to open up about that, he was telling me about how he had, I guess he had gotten a little bit too far one night, and he had frozen his legs, and they had had to amputate his legs. He was cheerful as he articulated that he had started to smell gas at a very young age and very quickly became addicted. He told me how last October, he had lived in our backyard at the shop for five days without food or water. He had noticed our employees moving around, but nobody noticed him. I thought that was pretty sad. He was very open with his story and how he looked for places to take away some of his pain. So I felt sorry for him and wished I could do more to help him. But it felt kind of helpless to do more than offer him a warm coffee, some toast, and a short time of fellowship. I know he is one of many homeless people in this community. And some of that is from choices that we made, and in his case, it was. Nevertheless, he still needs a guiding hand to help him along. So it was a bit of an eye-opener for me.
Thank you. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us. I'll ask that you remove 6A from that. That has been withdrawn. We will now, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Counsel Funks, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. All right, we have the minutes in front of us from March 6th. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Counsel Simmons, seconded by Counsel Swagstra. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. There's no business arising from the minutes. We will now move to the public hearing in regards to variation V 2018-01. This is in regards to number two, PTH 12 North, and number five, Lowen Boulevard. This is starting on page 19, counsel. Can I, I will close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Workin Dean, I'll get you to introduce this, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is an application for variance filed V-2018-01 for the civic addresses, as you mentioned. The owner of the property is 1-000-2623 Manitoba, Inc. The applicant for the variance is Mr. Mike Fast. Purpose of the variance application is to permit a north side yard of zero feet, where a minimum of 15 feet is required in the C3 commercial corridor zone. The applicant is proposing to develop a mixed-use commercial building on the site. Notices, as required by the Planning Act, have been issued. There is no written correspondence on the file. With respect to the application, the recommendation from administration is that city council approve the application, subject to any representations that may be made at the public hearing and also subject to the prior execution of a development agreement.
Thank you. We do have applicant or representative of the applicant here today. Does the applicant wish to speak? Please take the podium. State your name and address.
I'm Mike Fast from 560 Henry Street in beautiful Steinbach, Manitoba.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Thanks for having us here. We purchased this property not that long ago. It's the old Husky gas station. We all know it on the corner of Lowen and Number 12. And we'd like to put a commercial building up. That would be retail and commercial together. It's showing at about 6,000 square feet, plus minus a little bit. And we're asking for a variance for the north side yard. When we purchased it, we thought it was a C2 zone property, which would have a zero side yard setback. That would be standard kind of the commercial zones. We learned afterwards that it was C3, which requires a side yard setback. The property that's directly to the south is Zone C2. But the property that's across from Lowen Boulevard here is Zone C3. So we talked to administration a little bit about whether we should look for rezoning. After some conversations back and forth, they thought that maybe a variance would be an easier process because the use is going to be the same regardless. So all the properties to the south have a C2 zoning, so they wouldn't require this variance. The properties to the north, if you'll notice, both of those, both of those properties are long, narrow properties, just like ours is. Ours is the one kind of in orange. The green kind of notes where the building approximately would go. So if you notice the two properties to the north, those properties are long, narrow properties. They both have their building set to the north side yard because that's just simply the best use. It allows us to get a lane and parking to the south, leaving the building to the north. So kind of feel that it's consistent with the neighborhood. It's consistent certainly with the C2 zoning to the south because you wouldn't need a variance. Through discussions with administration, there's been quite a few plans here to improve the Lowen corner with the Number 12 corner. So they had asked us for a 30-by-40 cut, which you kind of see in the bottom right corner here, where it says "future intersection." So we've noted that in our plans, and we're prepared to give that to the city for the future use in lieu of the variance here that we're asking for. So we've had to push the building back, and of course, that also helps push the building up a little bit. So we're prepared to give that over so that you can have a dedicated turning lane one day. They're talking like 2020, 2021 is kind of what engineering gave to us as the possible timeline for that happening. We've talked to the neighbor to the north. That's, of course, the person that would be affected the most by this, Steinbach Chiropractic, Mr. Terry Kaler. And so we've agreed to give him shared access across both sides. So you can see the 30-foot access on the bottom left. That goes to Lowen Boulevard. And then the access on the top right, that's actually a shared access, partly on our property, partly on his property already. So we're giving them a cross-property agreement, which kind of came as a recommendation from engineering, which would allow all of their retail customers to pass through our laneway on both sides. So they could go through the south. They could go from the east or the west. They can come through any direction and either exit onto Number 12 or exit onto Lowen Boulevard. Currently, I didn't bring that image of this, but currently, there's a couple accesses along Number 12. Engineering asked us to just go down to one access just because it pushes traffic a little further towards the west, which we've agreed to do. And we've talked about what that will look like when we see the future intersection improvements and what that might look like. One of the questions that we talked about with the neighbor to the north, they were very concerned about the drainage aspect. We know that when we develop this property, we have to come up with a drainage plan, and we have to manage all of our drainage on our side. And we're fully prepared to do that. Our water should not affect his drainage at all. And we've had some chats with the city planner just to note that what we do on our property won't affect his drainage in the future, and it won't trigger a review on his drainage plan to date. I think that the only thing that would do that would be when he goes to improve his property. So we're asking for your approval on this variance as we'd like to get going. We have not done a lot of advertising on this property, but that is my business. That's what I do. So we've talked about it with a few people, and we have some new businesses that are interested in coming to Steinbach. It's obviously a very busy corner. So there's been a bit of excitement surrounding it, and we're looking forward to marketing it further. So thank you very much for your time, and we hope that you support us in this.
Thank you. There may be some questions from counsel before we move to the public. Counsel Simmons.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the fact that you're providing the city with the option of the future turning lane. I think that is important. We've talked about that intersection. I only have one question about the building itself. It's got zero side or back, I guess that would be on the north side, built on property line. Are there any exit doors for the businesses, egress, exit doors that would be affected there?
No, there won't be. We're looking at four possible units inside that building. So the two interior units will have no secondary access. Since the building is only 38 feet deep, it doesn't require a back exit. If the building is over 50 feet deep, I believe that that's when it triggers that extra exit. So the two middle people will only get one exit, which is the front. The two people on the sides will obviously get two. They'll get one facing Lowen and then either facing Number 12, and one facing Lowen or either facing west, I guess. So the two guys will be, the guys that will be short-changed.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the applicant. Just to the west of the proposed building, what is the intention after you have the easement? What is the intention on the other side there?
We don't know yet. If you go back to that last slide showing, I think I have one where it shows the whole lot itself. Do you have the longer one? Perfect. So it's got the 30-foot access kind of in the, it's not quite in the center. It's a little bit to the west. And then that whole area in green where it says "future development," this is actually two lots. It's Lot 2 and Lot 5. Our plan is, right where that green line is, that we would actually move the lot line to match up with that green line and then deal with the future development in the future, once this is rolling. This is all, you know, it's very expensive to add a commercial building into Steinbach. And so we're just not prepared to do anything further right now. So I don't know what that will look like in the long run. But essentially, that's where we want our lot line to end up. And we'll deal with that future development once we know a little more what the uptake is with this one.
Thank you. Further questions?
Just for the access off Lowen Boulevard, I've used that access several times. I don't find that it's necessarily totally safe all the time because you're coming along Lowen and you're making a 90-degree turn. And the traffic can be quite quick and quite heavy at times there. So I'm just a little concerned about alleviating some of those safety concerns. Is your configuration going to take in account that people will need to turn in, you know, when traffic is fairly heavy or fast along Lowen?
Yeah, that's a good question. Administration and engineering asked us to widen that access. So it's quite a bit narrower than 30 feet at the moment. And so they've asked us to bring that out. They've also gone, if you see on this drawing, there's actually three accesses off of Lowen. And we're going to go from three to one to try and improve the flow of traffic. It also is going to take more traffic further down Lowen before you make a turn. So all those things were considered when we thought about that plan and where that access would go. So they really appreciated the fact that we pushed that access a little further west.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Counsel Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you. Is this a building about the same height as the other buildings in the area?
You know, we haven't determined a certain height. Generally, in commercial, you'd have typically about a 12-to-14-foot-high ceiling. I believe that Victoria Plaza across the street runs about 14 feet in total. This building would be generally consistent with that. I haven't, I haven't, I've got a little note on the side. It shows about 16 feet. And we're proposing a flat roof here. So, you know, I would think that, I never measured the buildings beside, but I would think it would be very close.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, counsel. I'll ask you to take your seat. There may be other questions from the public. But any questions or comments or anyone wishing to object at this time? Please take the podium. State your name and your address.
Terry Kaler, 10 Lions Gate Drive. And I'm also the owner of the current, yeah. Mr. Mayor and counsel, just Mike and his wife have been just, they've been very awesome about how they've dealt with this so far. So very cordial in their talks and some of the information. It's just that it's come a little bit quick. So I've had to scramble a little bit for some questions. So one of them was the cross-access agreement, which I went to my counselor or counsel, and he wasn't quite confident. He would like to see the agreement, which I think I already talked to Mike. They will draw it up, I believe. And then I could present that to my counsel just to see. He wasn't quite familiar with exactly all the, the way that this agreement would be made. Currently, I have two easements on here. One, that was just in the initial opening that you see right around the corner from 12 and Lowen, which the city is going to, I guess, close off, as Mike was saying. And then the, kind of the long driveway at the second part there. There is kind of a, it's a kind of a unique lot, having been situated out here for 27 years. And my parents had this before, and with Husky beside there. There is actually kind of a fourth access point, which is the Funks Toyota lot. So what will happen is there's going to be lots of cross-car traffic because they'll either try to avoid the traffic that's building up on 12 to access into my lot or to Mike's lot. And then that was one of the concerns. That would be another point where there's traffic across. One question that we had was also the precedent that the previous tenant had at Husky. They did contribute to some pavement of the access across my property just because of movement. So we just wanted to maybe investigate that a little bit further with some of my counsel.
Okay.
That's the question, yeah. And then, secondly, I think the drainage was another situation where we did make a small addition a couple of years ago, 756 square feet. And then there was going to be a cost incurment for me for, they were going to build a culvert to help with the drainage, but we didn't have any drainage problems. Talked to Mike about that and then also with the city. So they were pretty confident that we wouldn't have to have a cost incurred for me for the drainage. So it looked like they want to all drain it towards Lowen, which is fine. So that was, other than that, I think, pretty happy with the situation. Unless I can also bring up a point. On the north side of my building for the drainage, the Funks did build a little higher elevation after, you know, I don't know how many years that's been there. But it's never been a problem. But I just want maybe put it on record that, in case it's a problem later on.
So let me just restate, if I can. Just, so you have just some questions around the cross-access agreement and whether that is appropriate, whether it's efficient or not.
Yeah, we had, yeah, go ahead.
And you also just had some questions in regards to the egress and accesses on cost sharing. Is that correct? Am I restating correctly?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nothing at this time? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaler. We might get the responses for you. I'll just ask you to take a seat, and I'll see if administration has any points to make. Mr. Workin Dean, when it comes to cross-access agreements and also agreements when it comes to cost sharing of accesses and egresses, does the city cover that off in a variation application through the development agreement? Or is that strictly between the two parties?
Normally, those arrangements are dealt with directly by the two landowners.
So that wouldn't be part of, wouldn't be a stipulation in the development agreement? Is that correct?
Not normally correct.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Kaler, you heard what Mr. Workin Dean said in that we can't stipulate exactly how those access agreements take place. But we recognize your concern, and you'll have to work together with your neighbor if this is approved to make sure those are appropriate. Okay? Anyone else wishing to, anyone else have any questions or any concerns? Or wishing to object? Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Fair?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Penner. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me that this is a good fit for that corner. The applicant has done their homework. And I think they've talked to the neighbors. That was one of the first questions that I had to make sure that we would address here. And so I think that it seems that they want to work together very, very well. So, and it's something that's going to add value to that corner, I think. And I like especially the fact that we're going to be able to fix that corner a little bit there. So that's, I think it's good for the city as well.
Thank you. Counsel Penner?
Yes, just to add to Counsel Fair's comments, this looks like a good fit for the area. I'm happy to see that the neighbors are working together on this and seeking to resolve some issues with access and drainage. So those are always important. We want to make sure that, once it is utilized, that it works well for everyone involved. So that is very, very good, and it's good for Steinbach and the people that will be going there as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, this is now, the public hearing is over, so we have to proceed. Counsel Swagstra and then...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support the motion as well. I think that, you know, we need to sort of make, to look specifically at what's being requested. And the request is a variance to allow a north side yard at zero feet in a C3 commercial zone. It's important to note a couple of things. First of all, this would be permissible automatically if it was slightly different zoning, if it was C2, which is simply a different type of commercial. And that's what some of the properties right in the vicinity are, hence why they have zero side yards. When you consider the type of use here, that if this was a C2 property, this is exactly the type of building that would have been going there. And when you look at the properties nearby in terms of the use of the land, it certainly does seem consistent with that. But I'm confident the other aspects, in terms of access and such, can be worked out. But what we're approving here is a variance request. And the variance request is specifically to allow that side yard to be at zero feet, to be consistent with the other buildings in the area, and to allow it to be developed properly. So I think on that basis, it makes sense to approve.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything closing? Counsel, obviously, we've heard from the applicant. We also heard from the neighbor. And we've seen that the applicant has been working very diligently with the neighbor, trying to come up with agreements. Obviously, there are some details that will have to be hammered out, which we fully expect. And I think they both expect as well, specifically when it comes to the cross-access agreements. Drainage also has been worked on with our engineering and administration. And I think that's, looks like the plan will be in place as well. And that'll be part of the development agreement. We also do have a sliver of land that will be handed over to the city so that that intersection can be improved in the near future. These are all positive things. Not only are we going to get a new building, but we'll actually get a better corner in the long run. And we'll get additional commercial space and additional services for our city. So I think it's appropriate to grant the variation, understanding clearly that the applicant is going to be working together with his neighbor to make sure that those agreements are put in place and are appropriate. Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. All right, counsel. We will then move to the reports and recommendations of the city manager. This is 8A, 2018. This is the 2018 Concrete Roadway on McKenzie Avenue. Page 33, you have the numbers. Mr. Workin Dean.
This is a presentation of the tender that was recently opened for the McKenzie Avenue Reconstruction Project anticipated for 2018. And this project would see the reconstruction of McKenzie Avenue from Brandt Street up to Lilac Bay. The tender closed on March 8, 2018, with four bids received. Recommendation by the project engineers to award the contract to the low bidder, being Maple Leaf Construction LTD. The detail is provided in your agenda packages. And therefore, the administration recommendation is to award the tender to Maple Leaf Construction for the amount of $514,410 plus applicable taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Workin, can you just comment on the additional dollars that will be spent on this over and above the tender, just so that we know there isn't $180,000 of legal room there?
Yes, there's, there is, I believe, approximately $130,000 or so in engineering and administration costs that will be required. There will also be some general utility-related costs for the project that are not included in this tender package.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Simmons.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Swagstra. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a tender, or this is a tender for the, to award the contract for the concrete at the corner of McKenzie from Brandt to Lilac. A lot of heavy truck traffic there from Bartman Concrete. So that roadway does need to be repaired and upgraded. And so the contract has come in substantially under budget. So we're ahead of this year's budget already. And so we would like to accept the motion that we approve this tender to Maple Leaf.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, I just want to remind you that the engineering, or the budget for the water treatment facility came in well over budget. So don't count your chickens. Counsel Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will second this, and see if it shows just how cooperative we all are, and we can all come to agreements. And this certainly does seem to be a good tender for us to award. So absolutely, it is the lowest bid, and it's an important project because it'll be the concrete we're surfacing of Brandt Street to Lilac Bay. And it's funded by a variety of things. There's a debt issue, $500,000, transfer funds from our capital development reserve. And there's also a contribution from a benefiting landowner. So there's a variety of sources of money coming in. And so it makes sense to award this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Fair?
Just to comment, I'm excited to see how, how excited Counsel Swagstra is because he's going to be driving a new concrete there.
Doesn't this go straight to Counsel Swagstra's house?
It's next year.
All right. Further discussion? Anything in closing? All right. Counsel, obviously, we see this does come in slightly under budget, but there are additional costs, such as engineering, potential improvements to the lights along there. So obviously, this will come in still under budget, but much closer to the budget than what this reflects. This is good to see. This is going to be a road that is going to last a long time, well beyond anyone on this council, being on this council, I believe. We'll see. It's concrete. It better last 30 years plus. But this is obviously needed in that area. Not only is it going to improve that road, but it's also going to make it last a long time. And we have, there's a lot of heavy construction along there. So it also speaks to the level of infrastructure that we are putting in when it's needed. And our administration does have certainly a clear understanding of high standards. Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We have the accounts payable in the back of the book. Can I have a motion to approve, please? You've all had a chance to review them. Counsel Funks, seconded by Counsel Fair. Any discussion? Things have to be paid. All those in favor. Carried. We have excavator licenses on page 37. You've all had a chance to read those over. Counsel Penner, seconded by Counsel Penner. Any discussion? I'm not going to ask you to tell us who we're actually awarding these to because it is on those papers. All those in favor. Carried. We have 9C. We have the Manitoba Hydro Street Lighting Award. There's a resolution on page 41. Can someone move that, please? Counsel Funks, seconded by Counsel Simmons. Any discussion? Call for the...
The non-strobing lights would be nice.
Yes. Believe me. I know. Just so counsel is aware, the three of the five that were strobing in this community, three of them were in front of my house, and they have been fixed. Finally, after two years. All those in favor. Carried. We have the 9D. We have the reserve transfers on page 44. Mr. Workin Dean, I'll get you to just review this briefly so that highlight anything that you'd like to highlight. that you'd like to highlight.
Yes, I, I guess I'll start by saying this is an annual report that is provided for council's information and consideration. There are a number of reserve transfers, both from operating funds to the designated and designated reserve funds that happen on a, on an annual basis and also transfers that happen from the reserve funds into the, to the operating funds in order that projects can be properly funded. You'll see the, the two columns with respect to the number of different sections in, in that report. One was the, one column being the estimated column that was set at the time of the twenty-seventeen budget. And the second column shows the actual amounts that have been determined now that the city's annual financial statements for twenty-seventeen are nearing completion. I'd like to bring to your attention a few items that are in addition to what was anticipated or previously expected and that relates to twenty-seventeen surplus. In the first section noting transfers from the general operating fund and in particular the first one would be in five lines down from the top of the page to the capital development reserve. Administration is recommending three-hundred-thousand dollars from the twenty-seventeen surplus be transferred to the capital development reserve to look after future infrastructure renewal for roads and a variety of surface works. Further on down towards the bottom of that particular section, we're also suggesting a transfer of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the general operating fund to the equipment and machinery reserve to fund future anticipated machinery purchases. And finally, the last line, a transfer to the city's pool reserve to fund the annual upgrade and refurbishing program that has been proposed to be started in twenty-eighteen for the total amount of three-hundred-thousand dollars. Finally, in the section just below, that reads from utility operating fund to utility replacement reserve, we are also recommending the transfer of five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which by and large represents the operating surplus within the city's utility fund during twenty-seventeen. The balance of the transfers make up transfers from the replacement reserves to the operating funds to pay for a variety of programs and projects that were undertaken in twenty-seventeen. If council does have any questions, I could certainly answer them.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions for administration before we move the motion? Seeing none, can I have a motion to, there's a motion on the bottom of page forty-five. Can I have someone move that, please? Council Penner, seconded by Council Fair. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is part of the budgeting process as well, where we have reserves and we use those reserves earmarked for certain things and that usually comes from the, obviously the general operating fund so that we can move money around as needed and as necessary. So it's very good to see the, the designated three-hundred-thousand dollars being transferred to the capital, to the capital development reserve from general operating and also the, in specific, the utility replacement reserve being five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and I'm sure that will help us as we undertake some very large projects in the future.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything further from council? All right. Anything closing? All right, council, obviously this is something we do every year. There are some smaller amounts and some larger amounts here. Obviously we've seen administration has been prudent in how they've run the budget and we have almost two million dollars of unbudgeted dollars that are being put into reserve. This is fairly standard when it comes to capital development fees because we never know how many, how much is going to come in and we certainly don't budget for that dollar amount until after we see it. And so that's why this partially is reflected in, in that two million dollars. But obviously this is about planning. This is about planning for the future. We see over a million dollars putting, being put into the, into the recreation reserve. We see additional dollars put into some very strategic things that we know we're going to be spending significant dollars on in the future and obviously this is good, long-term planning. Call for the question, all those in favor? On page forty-six, we have the grant reconciliation for twenty-seventeen. Can I have, there is a motion on the bottom. Can I have someone approve that motion, please? Council Seaman, seconded by Council Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Thank you. Any questions of council? Council Funk?
Mr. Mayor, through administration, at, Mr. Workington, on March sixth, we, we had a resolution of council to write a letter to the Prime Minister and the Employment Minister. Did that letter get written and sent? I know it got written, but last time I checked it hadn't got sent. Just checking.
Just one moment. That letter has been mailed today.
Today?
Yes.
The vote was yesterday. Yeah, the vote was yesterday. Yeah. I guess we missed it.
Sorry, the, the?
It was, it was a letter, it was a resolution of council to, to write a letter to the Prime Minister and the Employment Minister, or, yeah, Employment Minister, to remove the, the checking of the box of the ask station for public funding for the summer drought program. That vote was yesterday, was defeated and our letter didn't get there.
Okay. Our letter was sent, but obviously this is something that's ongoing and it's something that they're going to probably continue to have discussions on, so I don't think there's a ineffectiveness of still having it arrive in, at his desk. Yeah. Yeah. Council Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this last week and the Canadian University Women's Hockey Championship was, took place in London, Ontario, and the University of Manitoba-Bissons Women's Hockey Team, which were ranked number one going into that tournament, won the Canadian championship. And what's so significant about that is there's three people from Steinbach that are represented on that team. One that is of note is Lauren Workington, who is a daughter of Troy Workington, our CAO. Another is the coach, who was born and raised in Steinbach and played all his hockey in Steinbach until he moved on to junior hockey, and that's John Repel, who's their head coach. And the third individual who's the assistant coach on that team is Elisa Peters, the daughter of Linda Peters, who we know formerly from the Chamber of Commerce and currently with Bethesda Foundation, her daughter is also an assistant coach there. So I think very few times do we have national championships, individuals who come out of Steinbach. I think they need to be noted here, council, that it's sure is an honor to have these people from Steinbach represent Steinbach through the University of Manitoba-Bissons Hockey Team.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And the question is?
There's no question, now, on Council Seaman, I'm not sure, but, so the question is to administration, how do you feel about your daughter?
Overwhelmed.
There you go. That is good. Well, certainly send her our congratulations. It's very exciting to hear.
Thank you, I will do so.
There's no correspondence and petitions at this time, no other business. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Council Fair, seconded by Council Penner. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you.